Welcome, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. It is 6:32 PM September 22nd, 2025. I'd ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The next order of business would be Item 3, the Approval of the Agenda.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pennell and a second by Commissioner Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, eyes have it. Okay, we will now look to get the approval of minutes dated May 19th, 2025.
A motion to approve is submitted.
So we have a motion to approve as written. My question is from Commissioner Pennell, the second by Commissioner Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay, next order of business is number 5. It is a public hearing.
I make a motion that we go into a public hearing at 6:33.
Second, we have an approval or a motion by Commissioner Gurley, the second by Commissioner Pennell, to open hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Lennox Township Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 22nd, 2025, beginning at 6:34 PM at the Lennox Township Municipal Office Building located at 63775 Crashet, Lennox, Michigan, 48050. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on a rezoning request submitted by Lennox Parking, Inc. on the following property. Parcel ID 190631300026, vacant 26-mile road totaling 21.87 acres on the north side of 26-mile road between Wurteman and Place Road. The request is to change the zoning from agricultural to light industrial to develop a vehicle storage lot and RV resort. A complete copy of this application materials may be examined at the office of Township Clerk during regular business hours prior to the hearing. Written comments and all that will have been sent in advance. This notice is published pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 184 of 1943 as amended. All right. With that, we will go to the case summary by the planner.
Good evening, Commissioner. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, the property is zoned currently zone ag, AG, and the request from Lennox Parking is to rezone the property to high one to light industrial. It's approximately 21.87 acres. There was a drawing submitted with the application that showed a 735 space recreational vehicle storage and a 39 space recreational vehicle resort clubhouse in Spoonpool. This is not a conditional rezoning, so a site plan that's submitted with the rezoning has no bearing on the zoning decision. In fact, if you granted the zoning to high one, they could build anything within that zoning district regardless of what the drawings specified. So I'm asking you to ignore that drawing because it is not, like I said, it wasn't offered as a conditional zoning exhibit. So anything that's allowed in industrial building manufacturing, storage contracting yards would be allowed if you rezoned this property. The, uh, there's approximately 967 feet of frontage along 26-mile road, except for a small portion of the southeast property. The site lies almost totally within the 100-year flood hazard area, as you can see in the charts I submitted to you. Typically, rezoning requests are reviewed for compatibility with the surrounding area and compatibility with the master plan. In terms of compatibility with the surrounding area, it is not compatible at all. North, the zoning is recreation. East, the zoning is agriculture. South, in Chesterfield Township, it's also agriculture. West is residential. So the request for industrial zoning is not consistent with that, so that's one of the criteria we typically look at when we recommend approval or denial of rezoning. The second is compatibility with the master plan. As you know, you have a master plan that you're going to be looking at a draft or sending a draft out for public review tonight, but I have reviewed according to the previous master plan, which was adopted several years ago, and the new master plan is being proposed. The request is not consistent with both the goals of the master plan and is not consistent with the future land use map. So based on the findings, the rezoning is not compatible with surrounding area, the rezoning is not consistent with the proposed master plan and the existing master plan. The majority of the property lies within the 100-year flood hazard area, and if it's rezoned industrial, the resort community, the recreational vehicle resorts are not allowed in industrial areas, so even the proposal was submitted wouldn't be allowed in industrial zoning. Therefore, based on all those above, I must recommend denial of rezoning.
Thank you. So the next item would be public comment, which I assume seeing all of you here, there's a few of them.
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner should talk first.
Oh, okay, yes. Are you here? Please step up to the podium. State your name and the address.
Good evening. My name is Vincent Di Lorenzo. I am one of the owners of the project, and I would like to have a few comments before we go on, and I live at 978 North We Drive Rochester, Michigan. Basically, as you know, 26-mile is a very busy street. It's becoming a collector, but it's not as you, there's, it's not a quiet street. It's very busy. Farming around there is not very profitable. It's, it's hardly, this land is, when we bought it, hadn't been farmed for at least six years. So therefore, a farming zoning for that area is really not, not compatible. As I read the comments from Mr. Katson, Mr. Katson's comments is that the one, it's in the flood zone. We are presently working with FEMA to remove it. We are applying for LOMAR, which is a letter of map provision, to eliminate the flood zone in that area. Lennox never entered the flood zone with FEMA when it was available to do that, so it has to come, has to start from scratch, and we are at the present time in the process of submitting that, that report. And if you approved it conditionally, we would agree to that because we would have to do that as part of any site plan that we might later on submit, because you can't build in a flood zone, anything. You can't build buildings, houses, or nothing of that sort. So consequently, the flood zone has to be removed, and we are in the process of doing that. Number two, where the recreational vehicles are being proposed, we really don't care about that. We would remove that, and we could, if asked to table it, we'd like to table it, change it. That part we could change because we're not that concerned with that. So that area doesn't have to be, it's just something we threw in just to make it look better, but it doesn't have to be. We continue as the whole parking. Number three, if you go up and down 26-mile road, you'll see the same kind of activity going on, going east and going west. It's not something unusual for 26-mile road, the way we are proposing. Number four, the area of compatible zoning, if you look at all the way down, you know, if you go into New Haven, the areas east of there, it's all industrial. There's, there's no residential going on currently ever on that section of road. There's some residential that was built many years ago going west, but it's, it's a very small amount. So residential zoning, we're not, we're not fit. It's too busy. 26-mile is a very busy street. Eventually, it's going to become like another haul road, just a matter of time. So therefore, I think we made the criteria for rezoning in that area to industrial because we are compatible to everything else. Couple pieces of property next to it has already, you have already rezoned into industrial. So therefore, if given an opportunity, we would like to table it tonight until we were able to adjust what the planner had suggested and come back later with, with a plan that is more suitable to the requirements. And so I would ask for tabling of the, I am for at least 30 days so we can come back and revise what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I guess we have to go to public comment.
So the public can come up to the podium as they wish.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, can I sit?
Yep. So for public comment, it is a three-minute limit for each person. I think we all understand what you're here for, so let's try not to be redundant, stick to the facts, and go ahead and approach. If you get up there, please state your name and your address.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Marshall. I live at 55282 Stewart Drive, McComb, Michigan. Here, I'm a personal favor to Ron Rommel, property owner of 26645 26-mile road. I am a planner by trade. I'm not here in any professional capacity, but as a personal favor, I just wanted to point out a few things. To the point of the applicant looking west on 26-mile road, there's a lot of residential, both currently and also master plan for both McComb Township and Ray Township. There's a few pockets of commercial office master plan at hard corners, but otherwise, it's generally residential agricultural nature, and also master plan for that as well. The other few things I'd like to point out for this rezoning, like the planner said, it's not consistent with your master plan, so that should really be your first basis if you're finding a fact for denying the rezoning. I understand that applicants ask for a tabling, but, and that consideration as well. The other thing I'd like to point out is again, the master plans of those surrounding townships, both Chesterfield, McComb Township, and Ray Township. South is Chesterfield Township, which is master plan for rural and low-density single-family residential. Southwest is McComb Township, which is master plan for single-family two-dwelling unit per acre. And west is Ray Township, which is master plan for single-family. The rezoning to light industrial would be really inconsistent with the nature of 26-mile at this corner, so I'd just bring that into your consideration, as well as the future development. Obviously, this is a rezoning to be able to develop this property, right? And so the things you should keep in mind going forward in this process, whether it's going to be amended in any way, are the overhead power lines. Obviously, there's a big easement that goes along with overhead power lines in the developable area. Deer Creek also runs through this property, so again, another easement and another kind of developable problem with the parcel. And the fact that, like the applicant said, it's majority flood plain. There is a very small corner, the southeast corner of the parcel, that is not within the flood plain, that would be developable without going through FEMA, so just taking that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cara Metz Warren. I live at 57917 Wurteman Road. Like the gentleman said, he said there is no residential around there. I'm sorry, sir, but there is residential. I live there. Also, my concern mostly about this is Deer Creek. All of our homes around there all run on wells. We all have low water. We all depend on that to bathe, feed our dogs, drink it, bathe it, wash it every day. We all know that Deer Creek floods at 26-mile road when we get heavy rains. I'm concerned about a storage facility there that could be light industrial or anything but runoff if they park cars, diesel, trucks, gasoline, anthes, oil to get into Deer Creek because it does flood. That feeds our wells. Who's going to be responsible when our water is no longer drinkable? Who's going to be responsible when we can't even bathe in our own homes anymore? This is upsetting me, and this is the most concerned thing I have. It is a flood plain, and water does, and that Deer Creek does feed our wells. No aqua filter will filter out diesel or anthes or oil. We all know what one quart of oil and how much that can pollute. So please, take into consideration our homes. We've been there, and we do not want to see this come in and create more traffic. We have, West State Park, a lot of traffic does come down Wurteman. There's no light there. The closest light is at North Avenue or Crashet. It's sometimes very hard to get out of there. So now you're talking about public safety. There's no turn lane. There's no curbs to go around. With traffic coming in and out of that place at Galloway's Woodhours, that is a danger. It's a danger to us, and it's a danger to anybody that drives 55 miles an hour down that road, and it is 55 miles an hour. Remember, that's speed on some expressways. So please, please deny this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Gibbs, and I live at 58440 Wurteman Road. My home is very, fairly close to Deer Creek. It's, I would probably be directly behind this property that's being talked about. I, I want to piggyback on what the former speaker said because I was going to talk about Deer Creek also. The, the problem I have is that Deer Creek is part of the Clinton River watershed, and that's 760 acres that includes 1,000 miles of streams that serve our area with water, and it flows, it flows off. Deer Creek is, is one of the important creeks of that watershed, and that empties out into St. Clair River at some point, I think Lake St. Clair at some point. So that's one of my concerns, is for any kind of contaminations that seep into that ground and then eventually seep into that creek and cause major environmental problems. The Clinton Valley Watershed Council, for well over 30 years, has worked to protect that watershed. It's been cleaned up. At one time, it was terribly contaminated, so there's been a lot of work done, and even very recently, the county was out there and cleaned the creek at the 27-mile mark to remove trees and debris to keep that water flowing the way it should be, which is important. And I don't know whether it's going to be in the flood plain or not, but I have seen the floods, when we get the heavy rains, at 27-mile road in Wurteman, and it really comes up very high. So I, that's the only thing I wanted to mention, was a concern about contaminants getting into that creek, no matter what kind of light industrial use there may be. That would be an ongoing concern of mine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Samantha Kelly. I reside at 57350 Wurteman Road here in Lennox Township. I did purchase my home in May of '22, and I've truly come to love the community that is Lennox Township. One of the main reasons I chose this area is the opportunity to own my own land, enjoy the peace and rural environment, kind of offer the best of both worlds that are close between city and rural life. In your own township's master plan, I found a passage that truly resonated with me. Clearly, township residents value the rural character here of the place they live. It's an open-ended question that all residents value, that they had open space, slower pace of living country, and most likely the rural atmosphere that we hold. I believe that with what you're doing here along 26-mile road, I've just seen too many 26-mile road properties that were agriculture be turned into industrial or subdivisions that have created more deer population and more traffic. From your own master plan, I've noted several key points about the township's values and intentions. The area is enriched in culture and single-family dwellings. There's a stated goal to maintain the township's rural character. The zoning ordinance is meant to preserve agriculture zones and protect rural aesthetics through appropriate land use and screening. Rezoning the agricultural land to industrial use contradicts these principles and undermines the township's mission and long-term goals. Also, something within your master plan is that we probably have a very high single-vehicle accident rate. The regional average was 48.3%. We're letting it at 18.4%. This was between 2011 and 2015, and I'm sure with all the development in the past years has significantly increased, and I can see how it would increase more if you do this. I'm also going to piggyback off everybody else's Deer Creek. There's potential for runoffs and degradation of the well water that we use from that. Also, you know, what does this RV or car storage really purpose, the land that's there, other than maybe the developer and tax revenue? Moving forward, here are several objectives from your master plan that I urge you to reconsider. Evaluating zoning use to ensure capability in agriculture. Preserve open space in developments over a certain size. Require screening and maintains rural character. Develop rural design guidelines for new developments. Establish thresholds and requirements for traffic impact analysis. Allowing this rezoning to proceed would be a direct contradiction of these goals. In conclusion, I ask the board to honor the commitments made in the master plan to prioritize the value and concerns of Lennox Township residents. Thank you for time and your consideration today, and I hope my comments have contributed to a decision that holds Lennox Township to its roots.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Blake. I live at 26560 26-mile road, which according to the plan is actually my front yard, and if you have to widen that road, my house sits 20 feet from the street, so there is no way I'm going to be able to keep my house if you widen that road to allow this park to go through. And as far as 55 mile an hour, I live there, people are driving 60, 70, 80 miles an hour, and at the middle of the night, it's more like 90. So I do not want this park at all.
Thank you.
I'm not too much of a fan of microphones, but my name is Karen Conway. I live at 57500 Wurteman. This takes up over 10-acre stretch of my back property, 350 yards. Strongly against this. Obviously, I didn't buy my property, stare at a parking lot, or listen to strangers at all hours of the night. Same reason I was here months ago fighting the CRC part, which still hasn't been handled or rectified. So I can only imagine what's going to happen when this gentleman brings in campers, RVs, pools, all the rest of it. Not to mention, it opens the door to what? I mean, he could buy it, decide to do that, you guys are going to do, you know, approve it, and then he can resell it to anyone else, so then we'll be right back here fighting another fight. Amongst everything is, I have kids in the backyard. As you just saw, we have a bunch of kids from the neighborhood that are there. A young man by the name of Keegan was killed on 26-mile road just months ago, and now we're going to open the door to just more traffic, and he's not even from around here, I can imagine, but that road's not getting the traffic that he's talking about where, oh, it's got so much traffic already and all the other things. Between Place Road and Oma is all residential. There's no construction down there. There's no commercial zoning. My kids walk up and down those dirt roads, and I for one bought this house six months ago thinking this was my forever property. And quite honestly, I feel like Kevin Costner in Yellowstone, because I'm here every damn month fighting off the next stranger, the next stranger coming into our properties that I plan to raise my kids here long term. So I'm asking you guys, don't even allow us to go to another hearing. Just nip this in the bud right now so we can enjoy our house and go back to everything that we're used to. Thank you.
My name is Bart Quan. I live at 57140 Wurteman Road. You could be right across from where this is. My property, I have Deer Creek running through my backyard. I am a neighbor of Matt's. I was lucky enough to be able to raise my children here where they could have, enjoy their life and everything else and stuff. One other thing that they're not considering, if you do have a storage facility and everything else, is I don't want to be redundant on the other things and stuff, because there's a prime element. These are, these are places that are targeted for ease and everything else and stuff. And if they make it where they can't, you know, get into them, then they're going to come over and try to break into our houses and everything else and stuff. So I mean, along with all the other reasons, the traffic, the pollution, you know, on Deer Creek and everything else, this is why I strongly advise you not to do that. Let the people be able to raise their kids, you know, if God be able to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bart Quan, and I'm his wife. We live in the same house. For 25-something years, I was a real estate broker, so I'm piggybacking on everything else, and I would petition not to approve the rezoning because it is residential in that area, and what the gentleman is proposing would definitely lower the property values in the area as well. So the properties we have now, we bought them because of the rural character there, and it would definitely affect the property values in the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Hi, I've never ever seen one. My name is Naomi King. Me and my fiancee.
Can you state your address? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, we actually own the property right next to it, 26165 26-mile road. We also own, have our home at 57058 Wurteman, so we're right on that corner, and I will tell you, it is absolutely flood plain. My, my address at 26165 comes right up from Deer Creek, right up that bridge. We also own the property. Our property line's kind of weird because the Deer Creek comes at a diagonal through our property and then meets at the bridge on 26. So we own across Deer Creek as well, and if I was to go over there, I would be looking at a nice big parking lot. The direction that the back of our house faces, I'm assuming that if it was, it became a parking lot or campground or industrial, that they're going to have parking lot lights. I saw the diagram that it was, there was going to be parking spaces, so I can only assume it's going to be lit up like Mario's truck fixing whatever place that is down the street. Yeah, and so if the parking was going to be, you know, lit, then it's going to shine right into the back of our home, my neighbor's homes. Also, I do worry about the leaching of, you know, chemicals or whatever. If that leaches into the river, it's, the first place it's going to hit is my, is my property and my home and my wells and my neighbor's well, and I'm very concerned about it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rex Marfield, 57861 Wurteman Road. This doesn't fit the neighborhood. On top of all the concerns of pollution and everything like that, you want to give a FEMA hand. FEMA kind of knows what they're doing. They've been in this game a long time, but it's a flood plain. It's a flood plain. So now we want to change FEMA's opinion? So for a commercial parking lot to go in like this? So for a commercial parking lot to go in like this, I work construction. I know they got to raise it up. They got to bring the grade up or they're going to flood out. I've seen that whole field flood, the whole area, the everything there. So now, they want to raise, going to raise it up if they get permission. And then where's that water go? Right on down the street. Everyone else is going to flood out and everybody's going to stay hydrated. Because I'm sure they'll spend enough money to backfill it and raise it up so their parking building and swimming pool don't flood out. You know, the area is not set to handle that kind of traffic. And I don't think we're allowed to. Because then we can't do anything about it. And look at the storage yard at 26 and the railroad tracks. You get all the foreigners in there and anything can happen. They have big theft problems down there in that storage yard. Used to be a bus garage. And it's nothing that our community needs. I've lived there all my life and we don't want to see this happen. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am May Nelson and I live at 26240 26 Mile. I would be right across the street from this place. I don't want to see it. I just had my trees cut down for easement. Now I have to see that if you're building it, all these lights, everything. My well, I just bought a new well, $12,000. It'd be trash if they, they, sorry, head stroke. There leaked stuff in there. Please, please don't, please, please don't.
Thank you.
Good evening, Joe Moore, also here with my wife. What's her address?
My address?
Look, we get out here, I don't think there's anybody here that supports this. No disrespect. If you were nervous, you should be right up here presenting your argument. We presented our argument. There's a nice landfill, you can tie your property around here and put up your parking lot. I've been here 13 years. I retired here because I fell in love with the community. I fell in love with the parks and the roads and my neighbors. I put up with a substation that's probably a little large. I put up noise on 26 Mile Road from all kinds of races and religion that go on all night, Saturday and Sunday. It's worth it. What's being proposed is criminal. You're offending your neighbors. I'm a voter and we all vote. Please think hard and reject this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Earlier, I'll seal 25589 26 Mile Road. For a development like this, I feel like you should have sewer and water and I don't see any there. How's this going to work? Another thing you got to think about is these pollutions. There's farmers to the south of the project that Deer Creek vegetables are off there. So the vegetables that you eat might be contaminated by whatever leaches into the creek. Be a concern of mine too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Battaglia, 26450 26 Mile Road. Did not be redundant, a bunch of my stuff, I cross out the list because it's pretty much been covered. Couple concerns, there is no plan in any near future or at all to make 26 Mile Road another haul road. There's no plan to widen it. I've been to a meeting 18 years ago where they said if they started the plan, it would take 20 years for them to actually start the road building. And I don't know how many years before that to raise the money and there's no plan to raise money, no plan to widen 26 Mile Road, no plan to make it another haul road. Which is why 26 Mile Road has so much residential in its master plans. The whole surrounding area is residential. I'm not against storage facilities, but there is a storage facility close to Greshit. It's a more appropriate place closer to, closer to Greshit where there is industrial and commercial buildings. And my concern is if you vary from the master plan to change residential to light industrial, commercial or anything else haphazardly in between Greshit, North Avenue or any of the intersections where you might see light industrial. If you just do it now, just pick a spot right in the center from between Greshit and North Avenue, just change that to light industrial. Then at that point, what's to stop it from happening anywhere? This could just snowball into anybody. You could go another four houses and then what? We're going to throw up another storage facility? There's storage facilities going up, storage facilities and car washes everywhere these days. So we're just going to have four houses and another storage and four houses and another storage? Can you say no after you said yes to one person? So that probably my biggest concern is what's going to happen to the master plan and what's going to happen to the rest of the residential. Also, I live across the street. What they said about this theft and everything at the other storage place about the railroad tracks is true. You'd have to light this place up pretty good. I don't know if that would stop the theft, but I know that putting this big lighted lot in the middle of everybody's houses is not going to be too appealing to anybody either. So I guess that's some good points.
Thank you.
So James Foss, I live over in Chesterfield at 56801 Bates Road. All right, listen, it's not a part of the lot. It's not going to be a storage unit, it's not going to be, there's a list, a list of things it could be. We just dealt with this in Chesterfield. It could be anything. Nobody knows what it's going to be. And he's a development guy. He's going to come in, it's going to be, oh yeah, it was just this, it's just this. No, it's not. He can build whatever he wants to build. It's just going to keep pushing. I mean, he owns all kinds of development companies. There's, I mean, you look up on more, there's Quick Service or Southland from right here and he builds all kinds of stuff. We only have, I think, four industrial right now in Lennox Township. And nowhere near, I mean, it's going to get built out eventually. Something's going to get built there, but let it be houses, let it be subdivision for people to live. Don't just change light industrial, come in, destroy it. And that's what we did in Chesterfield. They tried to come in, they tried to change it and we knocked the grade down. There's no reason just to keep expanding. I mean, 26, I own a really big business on 26 and Greshit. It doesn't need to come any farther. There needs to be a barrier. And then barriers right at the railroad tracks, basic, and then just shut it down from there. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Pastore. I live at 57480 Wordman. The old farmhouse that was there from the originals. My main concern is, Lethal State Park will be less than a mile away. And that's the only state park in Macomb County. It's undeveloped. The animals, there's animals everywhere. I found a landings turtle in my backyard, which is a species of special interest in Michigan. The water that I'm on the well. I know all my neighbors have gun rangeers in their backyard aiming that way. I'm sure they've not been born to that. Just basically everything that everybody else said, but I'd just like to say what you allow will continue and escalate.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, last call.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
So everybody has basically covered everything, but I just want to also put a point across that it would cause more. My name's Kim Foss, by the way, 59750 Wordman.
Thank you.
I just want to put out one more thing. I was a bus driver for New Haven for seven years and I'm a supervisor now from Macomb Intermediate School District. We have buses going up and down 26 Mile Road. All the kids, as you guys know, in New Haven get picked up door-to-door service. And so does the ISD students and the buses are almost getting hit on a everyday basis. So I mean, that's going to cause a lot, you know, for the school kids. So you have to think about the school kids also if you bring industrial into there right now.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody.
Motion to close public hearing at 7:12.
We have a motion by Commissioner Fennell and a second by Commissioner Currie. Out there?
Aye.
Ayeshalet? All right. So now we can have our own discussion.
Is that me?
Yeah, you got something?
Okay, I agree with everything Mr. Casson had to say in his recommendations. Also there, and I know what he said about the drawing, just totally disregard it, but I also did not see any retention pond in that picture. The citizens, I can't thank you enough for all coming this evening. I forgot your name, sir. Is it Vincent? Yes. My family farms and it is profitable in the area. So I kind of take deference to that remark about not being able to make a profit farming in the area. So I think your data is very incorrect on that point. And I also live in that area. I'm two houses west of Wordman Road on the north side. And the light issue and the sound and that, that would be carrying on in a situation like this, I am total in agreement with basically everything that's been said here this evening. I've lived there since 1988. We raised our three children and I hope that all of these residents here that have young children will be able to do the same thing. Again, in our master plan, I don't believe this is a part of it. So I am in agreement and that we not table this, that this should be shut down this evening. And I would like to make a motion.
Is there anything else up here before we make a motion? Or do we?
We can't make a motion until? No, I mean, I would say. Okay.
Is there any other comments on the board?
I just, I mean, talking to the fact of the flood, flood plane, sorry. I used to work for an insurance company and it's very hard to change something that isn't a flood plane to not a flood plane. And I do know for a fact I used to drag that route every day to work. It floods massively over there. So for FEMA to actually say that it's not a flood zone, I doubt that they're going to really do that.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Nothing.
So I also, you know, have a couple of comments. I live on Deer Creek. I also have power lines. So I'm very restricted what I'm allowed to do, what we're allowed to do with that type of land. And, you know, I understand the want to develop and generate revenue. But you also have to understand that before you purchase property, you should look into all this, understand flood planes, understand the community. You know, you're welcome to come in to these meetings, you know, prior to things like this and open the table and have discussions. So I see both sides of it, but from someone who has also been here since 93 on that creek and those power lines, it floods bad. It comes up over 100 yards off that creek. So I don't think it would be a good idea to build that up. Somebody tried to do that illegally a few years ago at 27 on the bridge and that started diverting water, which made the flooding worse. So I've already had my property flood more because of somebody else trying to do it illegally, which I understand you guys wouldn't go the right route. But I've seen what a four acre buildup looks like. I couldn't imagine something of that size along that creek. I think it wouldn't do a lot of damage to the surrounding properties. So now, if there's nothing else up here, then we can move to number six, which is public comment on the agenda items. So if there's any last words from anybody out there, you can step up and speak. It's a three-minute limit and this will be the last opportunity before we move on.
Citizens in the area want to eliminate some of the flooding and we would do that. As you know, Deer Creek is under the jurisdiction of Macomb County Drain Office. We would work with them to make sure it doesn't flood anymore. That would be one of the conditions of any site plan. So therefore, the flooding would go away. That would be not one of the conditions. And I know I've done, I've done projects 10 times the size of that and eliminated all the flooding. So it's not something that's impossible. And that's, what you do is you work with the proper engineers, I have a good engineer that's working right now with FEMA, and get the conditions necessary to remove it. And when that happens, everybody's worried about Deer Creek. Well, we would probably encapsulate it. There would be that in that section. So none of the abfluents or anything like that would ever go in there, into the creek in that spot because it would probably be too dead. We'd probably put tubes in there. So therefore, the pollution issue, I don't think is, is an issue. We would eliminate that and we can make it a condition. No, not, no, not, none of the abfluents go into Deer Creek. So therefore, those kind of concerns is, they're engineering concerns and they could be, once the rezoning is had, we could deal with it at the time of a site plan. This is not a site plan request. This is the first request to get to a site plan. So we would probably out the area and these people that are concerned with flooding, we would eliminate that flooding for them. That they're next to their houses and things of that, that sort. That's the kind of things that we would have to do in order to make it work. So the other thing with, with the traffic, the traffic on 26 Mile Road is going to increase. And the only way you can eliminate is by building deceleration lanes. We would probably be forced to put a deceleration lane in front to soften it. Thirdly, and if these people are not going to be driving in and driving out, they're going to be in there, they're probably going to be there for five or six months during cold time of the year because they're not going to be driving their RVs. It's a storage facility, it's not a shopping store where you have traffic in and out. Once they come in, they stay a long time and they leave. So it's not something that they're going to increase traffic that much. So therefore, having said that, I would like you to consider tabling it because at that point, I could be with the planner and maybe we could work something out and come back with a, maybe something that would be applicable and satisfactory to these people during your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Ravich, 60450 New Haven Road. I live on Deer Creek, I'm New Haven. It does flood. I've been a real estate broker for 25 years. I've been in landscape business for 37 years. I have to disagree with you, sir. I can never make water run uphill. That is always going to flood there. There's no way you're going to divert that water from Deer Creek. And I do have to say that the property values of these people that are here today, they will devalue their property. I also sent the board a review for Lennox Township. I've been here since 91 and I'm all for these people here. Thank you.
I'm James Blake again. I just want to let you know that my house floods six months out of the year, or my land, I have four and a half acres. And six months out of the year, I can use half of my four acres. So yeah, you're not going to stop the flooding at all.
Okay, it's not just about the flooding. It is about the lights. It is about what we call, when you, if it's nice out there, it's dark. At night, it's dark and it's beautiful. And you can actually see the stars. You don't have the city pollution of the lights. And you say you can divert the water and stop the flooding. What about our wells? What about when our wells get contaminated? Because you have a small section that is going to run off. You back up to several people's property here. Are you going to go behind their property and divert it so they don't flood and that none of your runoff gets into the Deer Creek, into Deer Creek? And that, none of your runoff gets into Deer Creek? Wait a minute. It's my time though. So my thing is, are you going to be responsible when our wells are contaminated in a year or two or three from now? Who's gonna pay that? Who's gonna reimburse us for our property values going down with that in there?
Okay, we can't negotiate and argue up here on the mic, guys. I know. And again, everybody, let's stick to the facts.
Okay, I'm Max Marfield, life law resident of Wardeman Road right on the first curb toward 26. My sub-pump water runs that way. It's downhill from my house to where the drainage that the county and the state put in is 11-foot drop. So water goes to you. You wanna build that up to flood out the neighbors. That's not too responsible already. We don't appreciate your type.
Alright, you guys, we need to...
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt her. We do this for a living and we do not flood people out.
Excuse me, you haven't identified your name and address. And we're not gonna overtalk to me, please? No. You need to listen and follow the rules up here. This is getting unprofessional. This is not how it goes. This is not a debate. The hearing is closed. It was for public comment. At this point, we're closing public comment. Do you live here?
I live in Rochester.
This was the final comment. The hearing is closed.
So I'm not... I'm not sure if you're denying me to speak?
The microphone is not on.
But I'm not... I'm not wanting to speak. You're denying me to speak?
You can speak at number nine.
Are you saying how can you speak?
I just... Are you denying me to speak? Yes or no?
Right, everybody?
State your name or address and please...
Okay, my name is Anthony Lorenzo. My address is 978-Creek Drive, Rochester, Michigan. Nobody comes into a community trying to hurt it. Okay? Nobody's going after to flood people out. There are so many laws. There's so much that goes into this. You can't just go in and do whatever you want. And you can't just drain wherever you want. This is so, so more complicated. A lot of this stuff is engineering. We're just coming here with an idea. We've listened to the comments and we're gonna go back and we're gonna rethink it. That's what this is about. Nobody's out to hurt anybody. And that's really disheartening. And I really, truly believe that what we do for a living is very difficult. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of people involved. You can't just do it... There's a lot of laws. Environmental laws, there's engineering, there's so much that goes into it. So I just want an opportunity for it to be tabled, for us to sit with the planner, come up with some other ideas. Because we do own the property and we like to do something with it. So that should be our right as a property owner. Once you start taking people's property owners' rights away from them, this is no different than anybody that owns a home. You have rights. So we have rights to be able to rethink this out and come back. To say, no, you can't even come back is ridiculous.
But it rocks it.
Ayes please.
You have rights. Everybody has rights in this country. Don't take my rights away. We come back here, we rethink it. We sit with the planner, we come back. But to say no, you don't really, really do that. You really, you know, I should have, we should have definitely have an opportunity to come back and to rethink this and to sit with the planner and go over some ideas for the piece of property. It's not even armed. So it's not gonna just sit there. Something has to be done with it. So like I said, I just want to be treated fairly. That's it. I'm asking to be treated fairly. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be professional.
Good.
We definitely appreciate you having that speech. Thank you. We understand that everybody has a job and, you know, things do get developed. My dad was a construction on his own house building company, bought land and built. So, you know, I'm not here to be disrespectful for you guys or what your goal is, but I think at the end of the day, we're really strong about what we have around us. We bought here to have that country and rural experience. And I can just tell you right now, like, nobody wants this. No matter how much planning you put into it, what you wanna do with it, even if it's perfect, we don't want that in our backyard. So that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you for your time.
Hey, you talk about fairly, owning property and everything else.
Can you state your name and address again?
My name is Michael Quan. I live at 57140-Wardeman. My property backs up toward that industrial park that you wanna build. What is fair about that? What is my rights? You talk about your rights and everything else. So I don't, like I said, I've lived there longer than you've been alive. You know, so...
We're...
So why don't you take it back to Battle Creek, take it back to Rochester and build your industrial parks?
We need to speak on the agenda item. Not attacking people with that.
I know, alright, I'm sorry. It's, I do not, again, this is not what we need in this area and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody good? Alright, then I'd like to move into item number seven, unfinished business. There is none today. New business. We are here to discuss the rezoning request of Lennox Parking, Inc., parcel ID 190631300026, also known as vacant 26-Mile Road.
Motion to deny based on the planner's recommendation, items one through four.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Fennell with a second from Commissioner Hurley to... Oh, Mr. Planner?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the motion maker to recommend denial to the township board? Planning Commission doesn't deny your recommends.
It's a recommendation.
I amend it.
Thank you.
So will you restate your motion?
Restate your motion.
Motion to deny based on the planner's recommendation, items one through four and...
Motion to recommend denial to the township board.
And recommend the township board denial.
I second.
And so we have the motion by Commissioner Fennell and a second by Commissioner Hurley. Can we get a roll call, please?
Fennell?
Yes.
Hurley?
Aye.
Rossio?
Aye.
Millard?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's it.
Alright, aye seven. The next item of new business would be the master plan request to begin the 63-day review.
Alright, the planning commission has received a copy of the draft master plan. Point now is to go to a public review period. You have to request the township board by law, you have to request the township board to begin the 63-day review period so that we can place it in the newspaper and also distribute it to surrounding communities, to public utilities and the county planning and economic development department. We'd like you to provide it to a motion to do that. Once we do that, once the review period starts, I would really love if the planning commission can send comments on this master plan to the clerk's office. Because they are the receiver of all the comments that'll come from the public. Once we get those, I'll make the necessary changes that are grammatical or there's errors in the judgment. But the policy ones, if somebody's asking for a policy change, I'll come back to the planning commission for a vote, a unanimous vote. A vote of approval on that. So I'm asking you to pass the motion that I've presented you today.
Thank you, Mr. Planner. Anybody got anything to say?
No, I was told that I was not to ask my questions this night by Mr. Casson, even though Mr. Reader told me I could. So I'm going by what Mr. Casson requested.
I didn't see you weren't allowed. I said that we have more opportunity later.
That's what I need to wait when we're having a meeting on the master plan.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. So then we have a motion from you, or do we need to present it?
You have to make the motion. You're the motion maker.
Okay.
I make a motion to receive and file the draft master plan and request the township board to authorize the distribution of the plan to the surrounding communities, public utilities, SoundCog, Macomb County Department of Planning and Economic Development, and to begin the required 63-day plan review. Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hurley and a second support from Commissioner Millard. All fair?
Aye.
Ayes have it? Or can we get a roll call? Yeah, please.
Hurley?
Aye.
Millard?
Aye.
Rossio?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Fennell?
Aye.
Alright, aye seven. Okay. Yet again, we are to number nine, which is public comment. If anybody forgot to say anything, you have one last opportunity tonight.
I'm at Townway 57500-Wardeman. I forgot last time I was up here. I just have a petition with over 150 people in the area that could not be here with us tonight that I'd also like to say, hell no. Thank you.
Good. Alright, we are moving to number 10, communications and/or committee reports. Is there anything else to discuss on that front, Mr. Planner?
No.
Alright. Any planner report?
Just so the public might be aware, I mean, is aware, I know there's a lot of them still here. This item will go out in the rezoning issue. We'll go to the township board in our next meeting, I assume. It's usually the first Monday of each month at 6:30. At that time, the township board will take action on whether to approve, deny, or table the request.
Thank you. So if anybody wants to see how that unfolds, you can attend that meeting as well.
We'll be here.
Yeah, right here, same place. Alright, call from the table.
I just wanna thank all of yous for coming this evening and for the support that you've given our community. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn at 7:34?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fennell to adjourn the meeting at 7:34 PM and a second by Commissioner Hurley. All fair?
Aye.
Ayes have it? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.